Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to say welcome to Anarundel County and thank you for everyone who made the trip here today. I heard there was a little traffic, so glad you all made it. And that's, I suppose, a good segue to our topic for the day. Since we're an informal meeting, we don't have, you know, an invocation, but why don't we begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we turn the meeting over to our state colleagues. Thank you so much for being here.
Okay. Great. All right, well, hello. Just for the record, my name is Jim Ports. I'm Secretary for Maryland Department of Transportation, and thank you for inviting us to provide an overview of our draft CTP, our Consolidated Transportation Program, for years 2023 through 2028. I brought our team with me here today from State Highway Administration, Administrator Tim Smith, and I believe District Engineer Kim Tran is behind us. Maryland Transportation Authority, I believe he's stuck in traffic, Executive Director Will Pines. And from Maryland Transit Administration, we have Deputy Administrator Kate Sylvester. There we go. From Maryland Motor Vehicle Administration, Administrator Chrissy Neizer. From Maryland Aviation Administration, Administrator Ricky Smith. Not sure, he may be stuck in traffic also. From Maryland Port Administration, Harbor Development Director Kristen Fidler. Also joining us from the Secretary's Office, Regional Planner Dan Chanusak? I always get it wrong. I'm gonna learn it one day, Dan, I'm just telling you. Director of Government Affairs, Pilar Helm. State Legislative Officer, Melissa Ihorn. So first, I want to thank you for taking time to visit with us in Mako. Mako is a great opportunity to connect and understand how we can work together on some of the challenges for your county. And over the years, I think we've developed a really good working relationship. And so I can't emphasize enough that we're not only available at Mako or here at the CTP meetings, we're just a phone call or an email away. And I'm very proud of our entire team because I believe we're accessible and we get things done. So since our meeting at Mako, we've already addressed several key issues for your county. We received a request for a corridor study to determine safety and mobility needs and improvements along Walnut Drive, Maryland 261, near Harrington Harbor. We are reviewing the needs in this area and will update you on the assessment when it's completed. Now, I want to take a time to look back over some of the accomplishments we've had from Western Maryland to the Eastern Shore. And thanks to Governor Larry Hogan, record investments, transportation infrastructure, we've accomplished a great deal over the last eight years with the governor's leadership. MDOT immediately began moving forward on top transportation issues in every county and every region across the state. We've improved 100% of the state highway system, making the roads and bridges much safer and less congested. And we expanded several busy state roads into four-lane divided highways to improve safety and reduce the number of head-on collisions, including Maryland 32 and 404. Of the 69 poorly rated bridges we identified in 2015, SHA has replaced or repaired all of them. We're continuing to address aging infrastructure. We now only have 26 poorly rated bridges. That's a historical low for Maryland, and all these bridges are under construction, funded for construction or in design. Also on our list of accomplishments is a switch to all electronic tolling across the street. We moved, the move kept the traffic flowing and eased congestion and also helped the environment by not having idling cars. And speaking of tolls, very important reminder, time is running out to pay your unpaid tolls with the late fees waived. Back in February, we announced a customer assistance plan to help you help your constituents. We've given customers nine months to get their late fees waived and pay their unpaid tolls. And on September 1st, we started a nine-to-eight countdown. In fact, there's 31 days left. I'm sorry, there's 31 days in October, so we're throwing an extra day. The grace period ends November 30th. The clock is ticking. As of today, customers only have 50 more days left to pay their tolls and waive the fees. If you haven't already done so, please remind your constituents, family members, friends, neighbors, anybody you can talk to, take advantage of this money-saving opportunity. And turning to transit, our systems are also more reliable thanks to Governor Hogan's historic investments to lower maintenance-related interruptions. As our infrastructure governor, he kept Maryland's port and airport open for business throughout the pandemic with continued investments at BWI Third Good Marshall Airport and Maryland's Port of Baltimore. BWI Marshall, we're now handling more air cargo than Reagan, National, and Dulles combined. And when container ships were backing up at other ports around the country, there were no delays in Maryland's Port of Baltimore. In fact, we welcomed ships that were diverted here because they could not be served elsewhere. We'll hear more about these and other major milestones from our transportation business units in just a few moments. And I want to stress that Governor Hogan, Will Pines just entered here. Oh, and Ricky Smith. Both of them got here. Thanks, guys. I want, I want to hear more. I want to stress that Governor Hogan has delivered more projects and more money to local jurisdictions through the Highway User Revenue Program. During his past legislative session, he worked across the aisle to get a deal for local jurisdictions, increasing their HURs by 33%. The successful negotiations allowed us to amend the bill to look, to be even stronger than what was originally proposed. That's a dramatic increase to help you fund your transportation priorities and will help provide local matching funds and capitalizable funds that'll be available through the Bipartisan Infrastructure Investments and Jobs Act, better known as the IIJA. MDOT is here to help you investigate some of those federal processes. That brings us to IIJA, and I've been asked for the last nine months what we're spending our IIJA funds on. It's all right here in this manual. That's our draft CTP. The IIJA is not all new money. It includes our federal funding formula, including what, our projects that were already in the final 2022 through 2027 CTP. And during the next six years, the draft FY '23 through '28 CTP has programmed $1.3 billion in new IIJA funding. It's $178 million for airports, $166 million for transit, and $966 million for highways. These allocations are based on the federal fund formula outlined in the IIJA by the federal government. We're working closely with our federal partners on specific criteria to program additional projects for both transit and highways. This funding will help with the long-term state of good repair, and it's important to Governor Hogan and quite frankly, to me, to advance at least one new priority project in every county and Baltimore city in the form of highway, transit, or aviation project. There are also potential for some additional projects and discretionary grants that are part of IIJA. We're exploring those, and as always, we're here to help you apply for any grants. I think we mentioned that at Mako, that the local government is allowed to, to request IIJA funds, funds that we are not allowed to request at the state level. So if there's anything we can help you with along those lines, we'd be happy to. But shifting to the details of CTP, I can start off by telling you that this is the largest transportation budget ever. The FY '23 through '28 CTP totals $19.9 billion. That's nearly $2.2 billion more than the final '22 through '27 of $17.7 billion. As noted earlier, the draft CTP includes a large increase in HUR funds, which you could spend on your local projects, a 33% increase, delivers hundreds of millions more thanks to the agreement between Governor Hogan and the state legislators. That increase of nearly $2.2 billion in the draft CTP includes $1.3 billion in additional IIJA funds, improved revenue estimates post-pandemic, and MDOT's higher share of the state corporate income tax. The CTP devotes 35% of the budget, that's $6.9 billion, to system preservation. That's about $800 million more dollars in last year's CTP, and these dollars are critical to achieve and maintain a state of good repair for our roads, bridges, rail, port, and airports. Just as important, the CTP allows our transportation system to contribute directly to Maryland's economic recovery. That's the balance we need to maintain our assets, delivering major projects, and planning for the future. And that's how we deliver a network that's safe, reliable, accessible, and inclusive for all Marylanders. Now, I want to say what an honor it's been to work with our dedicated team of MDOT employees who deliver projects each and every day, and I've been highlighting their hard work in video series that we began called Ports, Supports, Employees. We showed Marylanders what it's like to be a crane, a crane operator, 165 feet up in the air at Maryland's Port of Baltimore. If you ever watch that, I'm scared to death of heights, you will not see a sequel. And I also went out with SHA crews to fill potholes, and I performed every task. And I also went out to pick up litter with SHA crews. Now, it's time for me to talk a little trash. So litter along our highways cost us some serious dough, about $60 million over the past eight years. That's an average of $7 million per year. Now, think about that. What a waste. I'm sure everyone can think of a much better way to spend $7 million a year. At MDOT, we launched a program to encourage people to stop this waste, or in other words, put waste where it belongs. And I brought together, I brought some reusable bags that we're handing out so people can put them in their cars. And if you have the headrest, it comes down, these two things snap around your headrest and hang on the back of your seat. We, we made two superheroes, Recycle Ruby and Canet Clay, and we created the superheroes so we could have kids shame their parents into not throwing trash out their windows. And so it's a real effective program we're trying to go statewide with. So I need your help, anybody's help, to spread the word. And it's just, quite frankly, it's not just about state highways, it's also your highways in the county, too. It's a terrible problem, it's horrible looking, and trust me, when I was out there with the SHA crews, you could not imagine how dangerous it is to be on the side of the road picking up that trash. And we want to, we want to help our, our employees. So if we all work together, we could stop garbage and $60 million from, get ready for it, litter-ally going out the window. I'm sure SHA Administrator Tim Smith can, can find a lot of different ways to spend $60 million. And speaking of which, I'll, I'll now turn it over to Tim Smith, the Administrator for MDOT SHA.
Thank you, Jim. Good morning, County Commissioners. It's an honor to lead the state highway team. As Jim mentioned, our District Engineer Kim Tran's here, along with a lot of several other members of our team. Last year, when we met virtually, I talked about building our shelf of projects across kind of three basic areas. One being asset management, where we're trying to employ strategies to get the, get to the best return on our investment or state of good, or good repair. Talk about accessibility, where we're looking at safety for all users, especially our vulnerable users. And then lastly, mobility, where we're using technology to utilize the best existing footprint of our existing roadway and help improve our infrastructure. So you'll see in the CTP, a suite of projects that kind of, across all funding phases, that fall into those three buckets. Secretary Ports talked about the progress we made statewide, but I just wanted to highlight a few right here in Anarundel County. So we're moving forward with several of your top priorities, mainly Maryland 2, Maryland 3, Maryland 214. All those, we're moving forward with design on those projects. And a special thanks to the county for your contributions as well as collaboration and partnership with that, couldn't do it without you. We recently completed a safety improvement project along Maple Road there on Maryland 169. We just finished up the resurfacing there. And in addition to that, in Jessup in the Fort Meade area, right there at New Business Parkway, we're starting, re-initiating the Maryland 175, 295 project. That's a new design to improve safety, not only for motorists, but also pedestrians and bicyclists, and improve connectivity and traffic operations to that corridor. You'll, you probably already saw some, I drive through there frequently, where we got some work going behind the barrier right now, we're kind of clearing and grubbing some of that area. You'll be seeing more work in that over the next few months. But harnessing the benefit of the IIJ-enabled funding, as the secretary mentioned, our team continues to improve conditions and add value across the state, and we're looking at it across the next five years. And I wanted to highlight one here in, in Anarundel County, in just the Millersville, Crowesville area. We're using some IIJ-enabled funding to make some improvements on the I-97 corridor, mainly focused there on US 50, but between US 50 to Maryland 32. So we're currently evaluating a combination of both geometric improvements, but also intelligent transportation systems, ITS devices, that allow us to, like, back to that mobility part I mentioned before, we're looking at opportunities to potentially use part-time shoulder use on the, on the shoulder there of 97. So I also wanted to highlight, just back to the accessibility part, we have some things built in our CTP that help us move towards zero deaths and vision zero. It won't show up in individual projects in the CTP, but if you see up front there in the statewide part, we've dedicated almost $80 million to help us move towards those, toward zero death goal. We've identified priority quarters around the state, one specifically here in Anarundel County, is Maryland 2 there in the kind of southern Glen Burnie area near Marley Station. We have a lot of pedestrian movements through there and bicyclists, so we're making some improvements there. But what we're looking at is both short-term, midterm, and long-term, and we'll be working with the county on sharing those ideas. So in closing, I just wanted to stress, kind of what the secretary mentioned, our District 5 team, our local team here is ready and willing to help you whenever you need to. And we know building those relationships really ends up resulting in a better overall goal for all of us. So I want to thank you for your time, and I'll pass it over to my teammate at MDTA, Will Pines.
All right, well, thank you, Tim, and good morning, distinguished state, county, and local elected officials. I'm Will Pines, Executive Director for the Maryland Transportation Authority, and I'm joined today by Melissa Williams, our Director of Planning, and James Kittleman, who, if he waves here, he can also assist you with constituent requests if needed. As the secretary mentioned, time is running out with the MDTA's civil penalty waiver grace period. Please take advantage of the plan now by paying unpaid video tolls either in one payment or incrementally between now and 11:59 PM on November 30th. Really specific with the end there, but we want everybody to understand that it is coming to a specific end. For every video toll transaction paid in full during the nine-month waiver grace period, the related civil penalty will be waived. Toll bill referrals to the Central Collections Unit and MVA have ceased temporarily and will resume on December 1st. Starting December 1st, customers will be responsible for the full amounts of all unpaid tolls and civil penalties, which will be due based on the printed due dates. The good news is, our call and web chat wait times are much lower than before, so customers can easily reach us to resolve any of their tolling questions or needs. The MDTA has completed posting online all Maryland customer tolls that were deferred during the COVID-19 pandemic. So the MDTA encourages customers to check their accounts at driveeasyMD.com and pay their tolls before civil penalties are assessed. You should have received a letter encouraging you to alert your constituents to start making their toll payments now. So please, don't wait until it's too late. Now let me update you on some of our projects. The MDTA is focusing strongly on our system preservation program. Work on the Bay Bridge Automated Lane Closure System began in February 2020 and will be operational this fall. This project will improve safety and efficiency during periods when opening and closing lanes, including two-way traffic operations on the bridge. The system includes new, large, overhead lane use signals and full-color dynamic message signs, which is a first in the state, which are supported by illuminated pavement markers and the automated lane closure gates. Also, pre-construction services are underway for the Bay Bridge eastbound deck replacement, with major construction expected to begin next year. The majority of the work will take place during off-peak times, including overnight hours to minimize traffic and local impacts. And for the last major project update, as most of you are well aware, we recently completed three open houses for the $28 million Bay Crossing Study Tier 2 National Environmental Policy Act in early September. We had a really great turnout, and I want to thank those of you who attended and participated in those meetings. We also continue to collect public feedback through October 14th. It was great news when Governor, the Governor announced the funding for the Tier 2 in June following the Federal Highway Administration's April approval in the combined final environmental impact statement and record of decision for the Bay Crossing Study Tier 1 NEPA. The four-to-five-year Tier 2 study will build upon the, bless you. Will build upon the Tier 1 findings and identify specific alignment alternatives within Corridor 7. Corridor 7, that's a two-mile-wide corridor that runs from the Severn River Bridge in Anarundel County to the US 5301 split in Queen Anne's County. In addition to our recent open houses, there will be several other opportunities for public participation during this multi-year process. So please visit baycrossingstudy.com for more information. I want to thank you, and now I'll turn it over to Holly Arnold.
Kate Sylvester.
Kate Sylvester. Sorry.
No problem.
At the MTA. Sorry, Kate.
No problem, thanks, Will. Good morning, I'm Kate Sylvester, I'm Deputy Administrator at the MTA, happy to be with you this morning. And I'm happy to report that it's a pretty exciting time to be working in transit in Maryland. In June, MTA celebrated the five-year anniversary of the Baltimore Link launch, which brought high-frequency transit with buses arriving every 15 minutes or less to the region. In addition to a more efficient transit network, Baltimore Link set the stage for dozens of innovations and enhancements for the rider experience. So this includes things we've been focusing on, like real-time GPS capability through the transit app on all of our fixed route service, which lets our riders know when their bus or train is arriving. Implementation of nearly 13 miles of dedicated bus lanes, which reduced travel times up to 25%. Installation of transit signal priority, which speeds up travel times by up to 22%. Mobile fare payment with our Charm Pass app. And last year, we launched Charm Flex, which offers three-day and 10-day passes, recognizing that riders are traveling with more flexible commute options these days. MTA continues to make significant investments in state of good repair projects to ensure the transit system remains a safe and reliable option for the region. Our capital needs inventory report was released in July, and it shows MTA's progress in reducing state of good repair backlog from 16.2% of assets to 14.4% over the last three years. And with the current funding, we're expecting those numbers to drop to 5.4% by 2027 and 1.3% by 2031, meeting 98% of the needs for state of good repair investment. Items planned for funding in this draft CTP between now and 2028 include over $400 million for bus replacements, continuing on our $400 million replacement of our Metro Subway rail cars. $185 million for Mark Train locomotives and railcar overhauls and replacements. $237 million for Mark Train track and guideway investments. $263 million for Metro Subway and Light Rail guideway. $51 million for Metro Subway station upgrades, and over $200 million for elevator and escalator overhauls. MTA will utilize $166 million in additional IIJA funding to support state of good repair and enhancement projects for all of our modes, including our transition to zero emission vehicles. Additionally, MTA is preparing for the future of transit in the region. The $65 million Mark Riverside Heavy Maintenance Facility in Baltimore is nearing completion. It's a really exciting project. It's a state-of-the-art facility that will enable MTA to enhance our locomotive and railcar maintenance capabilities, which supports major transit infrastructure improvements throughout the Northeast Corridor. As part of the regional transit plan implementation, MTA completed a public comment period this summer for the East-West Corridor feasibility study, and the North-South Corridor feasibility study public comment period is open now through, I believe, November 3rd. MTA looks forward to continuing implementing and moving forward on the 30 strategies identified in the five-year RTP action plan, of which over 20 are underway currently. In September of last year, MTA published our agency's strategic plan for the next five years. This is rebuilding better, committed to an equitable transit future. We've been working to implement the priorities identified in the plan, focused on improving the transit experience and system reliability for our riders by focusing on technology, communication, and collaboration. MTA is in the final stages of completing the first 50-year statewide transit plan. This builds upon local transit plans and the regional transit plan in the state and looks at a 50-year vision for transit and really defining what the needs are across the state for future generations. We appreciate Anarundel County's participation in the development of the plan, and we're looking forward to moving into implementation. As ridership continues to grow and travel patterns are changing, MTA remains consistent in our unwavering commitment to our riders. As part of this, the CTP dedicates $43 million in fast-forward customer experience enhancements across the transit network. This includes things like new dedicated bus lanes, improvements to bus stops and transit hubs, including ADA upgrades at, at stops, wayfinding, bike and shared mobility. These things really make a difference to our customers who are waiting at the stops on a day-to-day basis and remain, continue to provide meaningful benefits to the communities that we serve. We are actively working with Amtrak to advance discussions on replacing the BNP or Frederick Douglass Tunnel, and we hope to finalize that agreement soon. And last but not least, MTA is aggressively transitioning toward a zero emission bus fleet. We are investing over $269 million for our zero emission vehicles program, bus pilots and bus procurements. And the first buses in our pilot program are expected to arrive in spring 2023. MTA makes a significant investment in transit in Anarundel County by providing more than $3.7 million in operating and capital grants to support local transit operations, including $2 million for the city of Annapolis. Thank you, and I will now turn it over to Chrissy Neizer at MVA.
Thank you, Kate, and good morning. It's a pleasure to be with everybody this morning. At M.MVA, we remain focused on providing that premier customer service, whether it's inside our branch offices or through our alternative services. One of the greatest ways we've been able to accomplish that is through our new IT project we've talked about for the last few years called Customer Connect. Proud to say that we have fully deployed that as of December of last year, and so now we have that 360 view of the customer, your driver account and your vehicle records, everything's linked together in one place, which enables us to have customers do more services online than ever before. In fact, 74% of our transactions are now being done outside of that traditional branch experience with a customer agent. So that's really exciting to see because we know everybody's time is so valuable, and so we want people to be able to do things at their convenience. We encourage everybody to sign up for your MyMVA account, where we're 600,000, but still ways to go, and that will enable you to see everything in one place. So any letter we've ever sent you since we went live with the new system, you can see the status of your driver's license, if you're a commercial driver, your medical certificate, your vehicles, your vehicle emissions tests, anything related to MVA business, all in one location. So definitely encourage customers to do that, to allow them to find access to information themselves without reaching out to us. We do remain appointment-only, and that has really enabled us to serve our customers much more efficiently. In fact, more than 75% of our customers are served within 15 minutes or less, and so that's really exciting. On average, our wait time's about 10 minutes statewide. We've also continued to expand what we like to call our one-stop-shop service, and it's all about bringing other government services to our customers within our branch locations. I, using the analogy oftentimes certainly relevant to the conversation this morning, you know, drivers don't care whether it's a state road or a local road, they just want that pothole fixed, right? And it's the same with us. When they need a service, they don't really care what government agency it is, they just want to get the service done. So now at Glen Burnie, we have our EZ Pass Partners there, Customer Service Center. We added a Veterans Affairs Benefit Center, so that's a great place for veterans to go to get information, as well as TSA Pre-Check and TWIC Services for our port workers who need to get that security check. In March, we also extended a program that we've been working on over last year to provide birth certificates to our customers who come in to get a real ID, driver's license, or ID card, and need that identity document. So if you're born in Maryland, you can go to an agent and be issued a birth certificate, you pay the fee for the birth certificate, but we had no additional cost on there. And you go to another agent and complete your driver license, or ID card transaction. In the past, you'd have to leave, go locate your birth certificate, or order another one, and it would be, you know, incredibly challenging for the customers who are trying to take those barriers away. So we're excited about that partnership, and that's actually our agents who are issuing that. More than 50 people have taken advantage of the benefit since Uh, more than fifty people have taken advantage of the benefit, um, since that time, and, and, uh, I know that they've been really pleased about the convenience. At the Annapolis Branch, we also have the Department of Natural Resources, so a, a good, um, connection there, as well as Easy Pass Customer Service Center and that TSA Pre-Check and TWIC as well. So Annapolis is really that kind of full service center where you can do multiple services. In May, uh, Maryland is also the second state in the country to link the Mobile DL in Apple Wallet. Um, so that's an exciting development. It is a voluntary program. Um, it is free of charge to our customers. If you're an Apple user, you can download right within the wallet, um, your, uh, mobile driver's license and use that at BWI Airport. You can use it at Reagan Airport for the TSA checkpoint, as well as multiple airports throughout the country. TSA is in the process of rolling that out, um, nationwide. You may ask, why would I want my driver's license, ID card on my wallet? Um, the reason is really that when we turn over that license for so many things that are not driving related, we're giving all of our information to whoever's the end user. And it was interesting, as we went through the process with TSA, you would assume they're law enforcement. They need access to every piece of data on that driver's license. The reality is, they told us they only needed four pieces of, of data that were on the license. So that's a perfect example of, you know, sharing a lot of information unnecessarily with another person. Certainly, as you look at age verification, that's a whole nother level where they don't even need to know your date of birth. They just need to know that you're eligible for that service. So we're really excited and, um, continue to move forward with that for those Android users. We do have a announcement coming soon there. We want to make sure everybody has, um, equal access to that service. I know we've talked about Real ID a lot over the last few years. Um, the deadline is coming up in May of twenty-three. Um, but Maryland is looking very good. We're now at eighty-eight percent Real ID compliant. Um, that compares well against, uh, the rest of the country, which is at fifty-one percent compliant. We're also committed to developing solutions to save lives on our roadways. Unfortunately, last year, we lost five hundred and sixty-three people on our roadway. Certainly, we all agree that that is unacceptable. And unfortunately, we keep seeing the same issues that are causing these fatalities. It's speed, it's distraction, it's impairment, and lack of wearing seat belts. In September, Governor Hogan announced ninety-three thousand for Anarundel County agencies to dedicate directly to highway safety. Local jurisdictions are encouraged to develop their own plan, um, a local strategic highway safety plan. I would applaud Anarundel County for doing that. I know there was an announcement earlier this year about that. It really helps as we work together, you know, federal, state, and local level, all striving towards the common goal of eliminating fatalities. Um, the bipartisan infrastructure law has also made funds available to implement local plans, so that's something to look for. Um, and certainly jurisdictions who've developed a plan are eligible for funding, um, directly for local infrastructure improvements and that to the state highway administration. So that's another thing to be aware of. Certainly, at MBA, we strive to be the best we can at everything we do, but really, that's only enabled by our great employees who frankly have been out there during challenging times over the last few years and not only continue to deliver great customer service, but these new initiatives that, um, enable us to, uh, step forward as well. So I'd like to thank you for your time this morning, and now I'll turn it over to Ricky Smith, Director at MAA.
Good morning. I'm Ricky Smith, Executive Director, Maryland Aviation Administration. Thank you, Chrissy, and it's good to be here to give you commissioners an update on the important work going on at the Maryland Aviation Administration. Uh, BWI, Dergut Marshall Airport and Martin State Airport are important economic engines and transportation resources for the state of Maryland and the entire region. I don't have to tell you that because BWI is your neighbor. Martin State Airport is a critical general aviation reliever airport, providing important services to corporate, personal, emergency, law enforcement, and military operations. BWI Marshall and our airline partners support commerce, including tourism, business development, and cargo. We do this while also being a good neighbor. At the airport, we have a comprehensive noise program to help support our local communities, including a system with nearly thirty sophisticated noise monitors placed throughout the region. We created and supported the DC Metroplex BWI Community Roundtable, which has worked to make important changes to airline flight procedures near BWI Marshall Airport to the benefit of our neighbors. In August, the FAA presented proposed changes to these local flight procedures. The Roundtable agreed that the FAA recommendations were consistent with their proposed changes and voted to support the FAA's plan to move forward with the improvements. This was a crucial step in bringing important relief to nearby communities. We acknowledge and thank the Roundtable for their diligent work and for successfully completing their mission. At the airport, airline and passenger traffic continue to rebound, trending at about eighty percent of pre-pandemic levels. And during certain peak travel periods, passenger traffic has approached levels not seen since before the pandemic. Three new airlines have launched service at BWI Marshall in recent months, and several new or returning international domestic airline routes have been added at the airport this year. Beyond passenger traffic, air cargo continues to be a bright spot for the airport. Last year, BWI Marshall set a new annual record for cargo operations with more than six hundred and eighteen million pounds of cargo transported. That makes up more than fifty-five percent of the total air cargo flown through the region's three major commercial airports. We have several major capital projects underway that will add new services and amenities for our customers while also providing important facilities for our airline partners. Our fifty-five million dollar restroom improvement program is expanding and enhancing six sets of restrooms throughout the airport terminal. The improved facilities will help ensure an excellent passenger experience. Site development is currently underway for the construction of a major maintenance hangar for Southwest Airlines. As the first Southwest maintenance facility in the Northeast US, the hangar will accommodate three Boeing seven thirty-seven aircraft, along with exterior apron space for eight more seven thirty-seven aircraft. And the major multi-year concourse A, B, and baggage handling system program will transform the passenger experience and provide additional capacity for Southwest Airlines. The four hundred and twenty-five million dollar project is the largest single capital project in the airport's history. It will introduce a new state of the art baggage handling system, as well as new food and retail operations, restrooms, and a direct connection between concourses A and B. In addition to these capital improvements, the IIJA provides a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars for both BWI Marshall and Martin State Airport. The federal funding will advance important airfield improvement projects. The MA will continue to support the thirty-five public use airports that serve communities across the state. For the statewide aviation grants program that provides important state funding, thanks to Secretary Ports, and support airport improvement projects, the MA intends to administer three and a half million dollars in state grants during fiscal year twenty twenty-three for regional airports across Maryland. This includes a seventy-eight thousand dollars in funding for Tipton Airport to support airfield access, road construction, and stormwater maintenance improvements. So let me thank you again. I will now turn it over to Kristen Fidler at the Maryland Port Administration.
Thank you, Ricky. Good morning, everyone. Again, Kristen Fidler, Director of Harbor Development at the Maryland Port Administration. So twenty twenty-two has been a very busy year for the Port of Baltimore. While the international maritime shipping industry continues to deal with pandemic impacts that have disrupted supply chains and manufacturing, the Port of Baltimore has added new services, welcomed diverted ships from other ports, as Secretary Ports mentioned, and is working closely with our partner Ports America Chesapeake to accommodate current and future cargo demands at the Seagirt Marine Terminal. Recently, we've added two new services from the Mediterranean Shipping Company, or MSC. One is in around the world service between Asia and the Panama Canal, as well as between the United States and the Suez Canal. And the other new service is through the Indian Subcon- Continent and the Mediterranean. We also added a new service on ZIM shipping lines, which is an e-commerce focused service from China and Southeast Asia to the East Coast. And it truly reflects our strong capabilities as the top e-commerce port in the country. Baltimore has not experienced the significant supply chain delays that other ports have. And in fact, we have welcomed more than seventy ad hoc ship calls during the recovery stages of the pandemic. These are vessels that were diverted to Baltimore that were not regularly scheduled to call on us. These are challenging times for our industry, but we've been working closely with Ports America Chesapeake to accommodate current and future cargo demands at Seagirt, which is our container terminal. We have projects in the pipeline that presently and in the near future will improve efficiency, increase capacity, and reduce turn times for our truckers, such as adding additional gantry cranes, adding an outbound truck gate, beginning a digital appointment system and going paperless, and modernizing our on-dock intermodal container transfer facility, or ICTF, to double throughput capacity with fifteen point six million dollars in federal funding that we recently received. The Port of Baltimore is truly a prime gateway for goods heading to the e-commerce market and for cargo sent to the Midwest via rail. Earlier this year, we put into operation four additional ultra-large Neo-Panamax container cranes, the cranes that Secretary Ports got to visit from the tip-top. These cranes are part of a one hundred and sixty-six million dollar investment by Ports America Chesapeake at the Seagirt Terminal. Baltimore is now able to handle multiple supersized ships simultaneously. These additional cranes nicely complement the Howard Street Tunnel Expansion Project, which will allow for double stack container railcars and clearing a long-term bottleneck, long-time bottleneck that Baltimore has been experiencing. It will give the East Coast seamless double stack capacity from Maine to Florida. And construction is underway, and when it's completed in twenty twenty-five, Baltimore will be able to send double stack containers by rail into the Ohio Valley and beyond into Chicago. So allow me to briefly discuss our cruise business. Since the industry's restart last year, we have welcomed back both of our year-round cruising partners, Carnival and Royal Caribbean. We have worked very closely with the CDC and our cruise line partners on the most current health and safety protocols and to make our cruise terminal safe for all passengers and staff. I'm happy to tell you that people have come back to cruising from the Port of Baltimore in a big way, and we have had full capacity ships consistently since the restart of cruising last year. People continue to love the ease of driving right to the Port of Baltimore, parking and getting right on their ship. And finally, I want to mention the big news in our dredging world, which is my world, so I love it. Um, and that is the Mid Chesapeake Bay Ecosystem Restoration Project. Um, this is the follow-on to Poplar Island, which many of you have visited and I'm sure know, know well about. Um, so Mid Bay will rebuild James and Barron Islands, which is off of Dorchester County, again, using sediment dredged from the shipping channels in the Chesapeake Bay. It will also strengthen and protect the Dorchester County shoreline. And like I said, it's MPA's next frontier in coastal and island and aquatic habitat restoration. Construction starts this fall, and Mid Bay will eventually replace Poplar Island as the primary site for bay material. This is a project with a lot of environmental and economic benefits, and we're excited to work with our great partners at the Army Corps of Engineers. And speaking of partnerships, I just want to mention our good partner, Chris Phipps, uh, Anarundel County, uh, Department of Public Works Director. Um, he is a strong and longtime member of our dredge material management program, and I want to thank him and all of the citizen volunteers that serve on the Cox Creek Citizen Oversight Committee for contributing and participating in our program. They truly make it better, uh, because of their participation. So that is just a quick snapshot of the Port of Baltimore, and I will toss it back to Secretary Ports.
Okay. Well, great. Thank you, Kristen, and thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to discuss our six-year CTP budget. And now I'd like to turn it back over to the chair, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. And, um, before we jump into the, uh, question and answer part of, uh, today's meeting, I'd like to actually acknowledge a, a number of elected officials that are here in the audience. Um, I see County Executive Stuart Pittman. And I believe I see Jennifer Navabi from Senator Sarah Alfrith's office, and Delegate Dana Jones. And then I do also see a number of department heads from the County Executive's Office, um, that I'd just ask you to momentarily stand and let us acknowledge you.
I'm here with Chair of Health and Health and Operations Delegate Joshua and Dana Melman, who is also Anarundel County.
Thank you very much. I was worried there might be some folks I didn't know or recognize. So glad to, glad that you, that she is represented here today. Is there anyone else that, um, I don't recognize that, but I would like to recognize? All right. With that, um, I will let my council colleagues or anyone in the audience who has, um, questions. Uh, oh, Mr. County Executive, you have the floor.
Yes, I have this big presentation. Thank you. Um, thanks, Secretary Ports. You know, I, um, was told, I've been told by a lot of, a lot of the cabinet members in, in, um, Governor Hogan's cap, that you were all instructed to run through the tape at the end and finish strong. And obviously, that's what's going on here. So thank you all.
I get this slide.
There we go.
So thank you, thank you. That was a great presentation. The, um, you know, this stuff can get kind of dry, uh, for those of us who are in the, uh, regular world and don't, don't live it every day. And I just want to kind of, um, remind people why this is so important, all of the traffic, the transportation work. Um, you know, everybody, when I run for office, when anybody's running for office out there, they hear more than anything else that, um, traffic, traffic, traffic. That's why people get frustrated with growth in our county is almost at six hundred thousand people, has surpassed the city of Baltimore in population. And, and, uh, they feel it when they're sitting there in traffic. I felt it this morning. That's why I was late. I was five minutes late to this meeting coming from Laurel. I was ten minutes late going from South County to Laurel. Um, I don't know why we can't just get there on time. Um, it's because of the traffic, but, um... So, um, I want to particularly acknowledge Sam Snead, who's our Director of Transportation for Anarundel County. And, um, I am thrilled that we stole him from Baltimore County. And, uh, the work that, that we're doing in our county is largely, uh, Sam and his team. Uh, but I also want to, want to note that it was, um, uh, Steve Kaisigler, Plan and Zoning, who stood up earlier. And of course, Chris Phipps, Public Works. And then I have Lori Rhodes, who oversees all land use in our, in our county. And so as we're talking about transportation planning, we're talking about land use planning. And, um, I don't want to lose sight of that. So the vision that we have in Move Anarundel, which is our transportation master plan for the county, says that Anarundel County will provide, with your help, safe, efficient, equitable, sustainable, and multimodal transportation system that provides traveler, residents, travelers, and visitors with connectivity and choice. And when I go around and I talk to small businesses in the county and I ask them what government can do to help, they say they need housing that their workforce can live in. They need good schools, but they also need transportation for people to get to work from wherever they live. Hopefully, they live close to where they work, which is why we have smart growth and, and, uh, transit-oriented development in our, in our development plan. So I won't go through all of these right now, but these are, uh, the things in our letter. Uh, the requested, um, projects, and, uh, some of these are underway, and some of them are still, um, still being worked on. But let's jump to the next slide because we're going to get into the details of some of this. I just want to stress what's important to us. Um, that's part of the reason that you're here, so. Needs met, and this should probably say needs underway, because when we get to unmet, some of these same things are there because they're all, um, they're all in the works. But, um, uh, the fact that, uh, Route Two and Route Three corridors going north and south in our county, the greatest tra- traffic bottlenecks, um, we put money on the table in our pub- permanent public improvements fund. I think that's why you've raised them up in the priorities for the state, and I'm thrilled that, that planning has begun, design has begun on those, and it will get underway. Um, finishing design on one seventy, Maryland one seventy, um, six sixty-five, um, developing the alternatives, uh, to address the purpose and need that we've identified, all of us together. Both, um, one seventy-five sidewalks and Central Avenue, Maryland two fourteen, um, a hundred percent county funded in the design, and we are, um, hopeful that you will be stepping up. I know that it's high on your priority list as well, um, to fund the, um, the work there and get it underway. Bay Bridge, we will get into. Uh, thrilled that we're moving into tier two NEPA study. Um, and I'm also thrilled about the I ninety-seven work that I want to get into in just a minute. So the next slide is, um, you know, the Bay Crossing Study, we, we fought and we tried to get you to go somewhere else. I think it was Jim Lighthizer that said Anarundel County is the crossroads of Maryland, uh, east-west, north-south. Everybody seems to come through Anarundel County, and we were hoping to divert that traffic north and south, but we seem to be, um, we seem to be sticking with this corridor. And so now that we're there, we're on board, and, um, I think I was, um, uh, some, somewhat had a lot of things to say that the governor did not agree with on the, on the change. He thought this was the right corridor. Um, but once we decided to do this, I called him up, and we said, let's, let's work together and make sure that, that the second phase of the study gets done. And all we're saying on this is, first of all, thank you for the good work that was done. The all-electric tolling, when we saw it coming to the Nice Bridge before the Bay Bridge, we screamed and yelled about that, and you stepped it up quickly. Um, you, you were, um, really good about moving up the redecking so that it was, uh, much faster than originally planned, and we'll hope that'll be the case in the second, uh, the, the eastbound redecking. The automatic lane closure system, we are hopeful that that is going to move things faster when you, um, when, when you do the, um, um, do the changes there and that that will help. And then, uh, you know, we, we had this crazy idea that for the cheaters who get off of Route fifty and try to go through our neighborhoods and then try to get back on at Oceanic Drive... 50 and try to go through our neighborhoods and then try to get back on at Oceanic Drive, that we would somehow block them so they would have to turn around and start over, and you said, "No, that's completely illegal. We can't do that." But you've done this pilot program, which is fantastic, that is metered access, so hopefully it will show up on people's apps. But there's also a traffic jam getting back on to Route 50, and they will stay on Route 50. So I hope that continues, and I hope that we can make progress with that. But really, what we're asking for is a seat at the table, that the study is the whole corridor, so that we look at all the traffic issues along the way, and we believe that that will happen, and that it be a multimodal study, that we look at alternative forms of transportation as well as just cars, because this is going to be built a decade-plus in the future. So 97, Route 2 and Route 3, we're thrilled that we're finally addressing some of those bottlenecks and that we're going to be doing that work, but if we can move the traffic on 97, it's also north-south, and it's all related to one another. So we are thrilled that you are stepping up with the TSMO study to do TSMO. I had to look it up. Traffic Systems Management and Operations, it really means nothing, but we'll call it the TSMO Study. It's about the traffic and addressing the traffic bottlenecks. And I also want to thank Yumi Hogan for that, because I understand from Secretary Slater, when he came in, that she said, "We have to do something about the traffic on 97." So maybe that had something to do with this, but thrilled that we're stepping up on that. So the outstanding issues, of course, are the same ones. We have, and I don't even need to go through these, but we do need to finish design on Route 2 and Route 3. We do need to complete the design on 170, 665, the sidewalks in Central Avenue, Bay Bridge, and Maryland 198. So, and then this, this is, this next slide is something that I just want to note, that because we did this permanent public improvements fund in Anarundel County, it was 1/10th of 1% of an income tax increase to catch up with our county's growth, so that we could do schools, public safety, and transportation infrastructure. And so, I won't call it bribery, I will call it shared cost. We put money on the table, we asked, and you said, "Yeah, that helps." And so, it brought these projects up, and the fact that of the seven top projects in the state of Maryland, five are Anarundel County projects, because we are the crossroads. We're thrilled about that, and we look forward to working with you in the future to get them funded. So let's jump away from the roads and the traffic and the car issue and talk about some of the alternatives that will relieve some of that. Bicycle and pedestrian first. And I will actually read something here, because I know that our bicycle advocate is John Corrigan here, he's probably somewhere. Yes, of course, he probably wrote this, so I'll make sure I cover it, maybe Sam wrote it. But regarding bicycle and pedestrian priorities, we want to thank you for all the things you funded for us. The county's been awarded numerous grants in the past to build out the county's trail network, including the WBNA, South Shore, and Broadneck Trails. Not in the CTP yet, but we are also anticipating grant awards for the Bay Brook Connector. Hammond's Ferry Sidewalk in the city of Annapolis will be receiving a grant for what Mayor Buckley calls the "we," the West-East Express, which will ultimately connect the Papa Trail to Pearl. We also value our continued cost sharing on a variety of smaller sidewalk projects, including Maryland 214 sidewalk near South River High School, Maryland 173 sidewalk near Northeast High School from Rivera Beach Library to Sunset Park, and the Maryland 450-435 shared-use path improvement connecting the BNA Trail to the city of Annapolis, an important segment for the Naval Academy as well. We will continue to request funding to finish out the county's trail network, including key spurs to Baltimore County and Baltimore City. We also expect to cost share on more sidewalks countywide, for example, the Route 2 sidewalk connecting Brooklyn Park with Glen Burnie, that recently had a feasibility study completed. I would highlight that in addition to trails and sidewalks, another key area of focus for bicycle and pedestrian safety are the crossings of state roadways. Those need special attention. So we're finalizing our new walk-and-roll Anarundel Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan that will be done soon. We've done a lot of community outreach on that. Calls for safe, accessible, and equitable mobility alternatives to motor vehicles in order to relieve traffic congestion, protect the environment, improve health, and create a more attractive place to live, work, learn, and play. So we look forward to working with you on that. So our transit priorities. Thank you, first of all, for funding our lots, local-operated transit system, working with our staff on the consideration of TOD designation for Cromwell Light Rail Station and the development of the Odenton Mark Garage. Design of that facility is underway as we work on an MOU. We actually think we'll be, hope we'll be breaking ground before the end of the year, long-awaited garage there at our most heavily-used Mark Station. The lots funding has remained relatively flat in recent years, but needs to be increased for both the county and the city, so that we may both fulfill our commitment to improve the transit services for our residents. State funding from the federal transit allocation should be commensurate to the size of our county. It is less right now. We would welcome the state's participation to develop the first regional transit center for the state capital in Annapolis, and we are in dire need of a new transportation operations facility. We are nearing completion of our feasibility study, but we'll be asking for funds for County transit efforts. So we are, of course, not just asking for state funds, actively increasing operations to supplement the state services to better serve our residents and businesses. And we have some new buses and some new programs, including the Gold Line, well, we've added a Crofton Express route between Crofton and Annapolis just this year, extended our Gold Route from its previous terminus at the Anarundel Community College up Route 2 to the Cromwell Station, and we have just, this month, last month, implemented a new call-and-ride zone in North County, something that we did in South County, and we're looking forward to increasing ridership in that. So the good news is that ridership is up, the, all of these enhancements, as well as making all of our transit free, and starting to wrap all of the buses, telling the world that they are free, there's one parked out front, if you can take a picture next to it if you like, have resulted in a record recovery in ridership by 82% between January and October of this year. We are on pace to surpass our highest ridership year pre-pandemic. With the county's demand-response ridership at 60% of FY '19 numbers, with the help of expanded routes, the county's total fixed route ridership has almost doubled from 19 to 22, and the total annual ridership has grown by almost 20,000 trips. We are going electric. In fact, we have one electric bus, and one of our contractors has, and we're working on providing a way for it to be charged. All of us know that the infrastructure for these electric vehicles is the first step, but we have developed a zero-emissions bus transition plan, which was recognized by US DOT's Federal Transit Administration, and this made us eligible for access to federal funds. We've applied for and won $1.89 million in funding for hybrid vehicles and electric vehicles, and then Congressman Anthony Brown got a $5 million earmark in for Anarundel County to transition our fleet to electric and hybrid. So we are knocking on the door of the federal government, and we'll continue to do that as well as the state. And then the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, I sit on the board of, and we have the Central Maryland Regional Transit Plan, and the first of many corridor studies that we're participating in is actually to provide transit service between BWI and Columbia Town Center in Howard County, which we hope will get cars off the road as well. For our bus stops, we have started to put up bus shelters, but we also participated in a study with BMC, assessing every one of the bus stops in our county, no matter who runs the bus service in that location, and doing all-new signs. We're doing solar-powered lights in some locations for safety and shelters we have in our capital budget, and we're continuing to do more bus shelters to make it, improve the ridership experience. Also, created a new transit website, and believe it or not, our transit system was not on Google Maps, and it is now. Thank you, Sam, for finally making that happen. And a new transit app. But getting the technology into the buses is very helpful as well for the rider experience. And then, continuing on the planning initiative side of things, you mentioned the Vision Zero, and we've signed on to that and have a plan for that as well, and have, I won't go through all the recommendations, but I think we're going to be able to make some real progress there. And actually having, we're working with you on a transit development plan, the five-year plan for improving transit services in the county. And I will say that there is broad public support for improving transit. It's always, you know, you have to build it for them to come and use it, and we have to build it so that it is frequent enough and reliable enough that people use it. And then, I don't want to leave here without mentioning Maryland 450. We do want to thank you for the work that you did that addressed the most frequent flooding on that road, but we know that, you know, and we know that we need a longer-term plan to address the flooding with the frequent storm surges and the heavy rains that we're getting. Anarundel County has created a resilience authority that may be able to help with some of this, where we're going to be able to protect a lot of our public infrastructure, including that, oh, it's the next slide. So we look forward to working with you on that as well. And really, just thank you. We look forward to working with this team. New administration will be coming in, and we will be, of course, going from the top all the way back to you all every year to continue getting these projects implemented. You know, people ask me why I want to do this job and why I want to continue with this job, and one of the reasons really is to finish all the stuff that's in this plan right here. And it won't be done in four years, it may take a decade or more, but if we don't address our traffic and transportation needs in this county and do it in a multimodal way, we will literally be stuck. So thank you. And I apologize that I have to run.
Thank you very much for being here, and thank you for the presentation. Also, thank you to all the state presenters. Lots of good information, lots of good projects occurring and have occurred. And nice save. All right. All right. Now, I guess we will move on to the Q&amp;A part of our meeting. Feel free to turn on a light, or if you're in the audience, Councilwoman Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick question on the, just the Anarundel County CTP part. I represent the area that includes 175 and 295, and so it's very exciting to see the actual physical work that has begun and, you know, putting up the concrete barriers and all that good stuff. But I noticed in the CTP later on that Line 8 is the project from, to improve 175 from 295 to 170, and the project status now says "on hold." Can anyone give a detail about that?
What was the specific section again?
This is, it's Line 8.
Okay.
Page SHAA88. It's 175 from 295 to 170. The description is that this is a study that would identify traffic flow improvements on 175 and including the 295 interchange, and that the purpose is to address current and future mobility needs along 175 and improve access to Fort Meade. So I don't remember seeing this being on hold before. There has been a lot of work done around that area and very significant and effective work, but I'm just curious, what does this mean?
Yeah, so I'm glad you provided that additional clarification. It helps me out. So we're currently focused on 295 and 175, that interchange. We've recently, probably over the last five years, completed several sections of 175 there in front of Fort Meade at several of the gates. I think there's been at least two phases done there. The one that's, only one that's on hold is 175 right there at 170. So all the other, so there's been multiple phases already completed, and right now we're focused on 175 at 295. That would be the next one that we would focus on along the corridor.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District 2. Several areas of my community were mentioned. I wanted to ask Mr. Smith, I believe, if I've got my speaker right. The Marley Station, Ritchie Highway area, we're talking about improvements coming. Can you talk a little bit more about what those might actually be?
Yeah, so we're still very much in kind of the concept phase there, but what we're looking at is basically looking at improving that corridor for vulnerable users. We're looking at opportunities for both bikes and pedestrians as it comes in combination with our motorists going up and down the roadway there. What we've used as data, both our short-trip opportunities as well as, you know, origin and destination, to see where folks are walking to and from and along the corridor. Some short-term opportunities are kind of what we've done across the state, which is improvement of our crosswalks, potentially looking at no-turn-on-red in some locations, depending if we have a heavy pedestrian movement. Leading pedestrian intervals, meaning let the pedestrians cross first before we start letting vehicles. So there's some operational improvements that we can make within, you know, months to a year, but then there's all other longer-term opportunities where we'll look at more enhanced improvements at signals. Maybe if it doesn't have currently a pedestrian countdown signal, look at those opportunities as well as where we have folks that need to cross longer durations across Maryland, too. Is there opportunities there for either bump outs or some other ways to make that traverse that section a little more safely?
Fantastic. So I know my staff has worked with your team on some specific issues there, so I appreciate the coordination and the explanation. We have other lights, so I'll come back to my next one.
Sounds good. Councilwoman Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Thank you, each of you, for taking the time in your morning to come out and touch on a lot of important things in the state, and especially here in Anarundel County. So I'm surprisingly not going to start off with a question about the Bay Bridge and that area. I'll get back to it, I promise. But I'm currently getting, and I think we all are getting, a lot of questions about school buses and bus drivers. I know at one point the governor expedited the process and lifted some restrictions, from my understanding. What is happening in that area right now with CDL licenses and trying to expedite?
Sure. Thanks for the question. So we've had several school bus driver days. In fact, we did one right before the beginning of the school year, and we worked with each local jurisdiction directly. I think where the challenge is, is having people in the pipeline in order to take the test. You know, in the past, there were some delays, especially during COVID, at getting a CDL test. Now, you know, it's five days or less in order to get in and take a knowledge test, and even less for the skills test. So those delays that were in place, again, COVID-related, have really gone away at this point. So we did adopt, there was a federal allowance to allow school bus drivers to have a modified test and be restricted to intrastate only. That is something that Maryland's adopted. We have found not a lot of applicants are really wanting to do that. It could be because needing to cross borders or field trips or other activities as that starts getting back underway in the school systems, but we do allow that, and it is offered as an option to applicants who come to see us. Just in general, we've also adopted the new CDL modernized test, which was put out by FMCSA. We were one of three states that piloted it. It's much more streamlined, and the pre-trip inspection in particular is half of what it was in the past, so it cuts down on a lot of what was called memorization of different parts of the vehicle, and hopefully makes it a more accessible test, more modernized, and meeting the standards that you'll see in vehicles today, just like our vehicles have been modernized, so have the commercial vehicles. So we're doing a lot of things and trying to make it as viable as possible. I will say we've communicated to all the counties, but I'll state it publicly again today, if there is a need to get drivers through, because you have, you know, some applicants that are at that point, we will make, you know, those appointments accessible, you know, whether it's on a Saturday or, you know, another day of the week, whatever works best for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add real quickly that Chrissy Neiser has, in my opinion, done a fantastic job of making it available even on weekends. The challenge is getting not just this county, but all counties to find applicants that want to take the test. And I think, you know, County Executive Pittman mentioned a lot about transit. I think this is an area where if we are more successful with getting kids on the school buses instead of the parents taking their kid to school and picking them up in the afternoon, which is during prime time of traffic, it's rush hour traffic, so they're jamming up the roads, taking their kids back and forth, when literally they could put their kid on a school bus and use the transit facilities throughout, not just this county, but throughout the state.
Councilwoman Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Thank you all so much for being here. I really appreciate it. I have a couple of questions. I guess I'll start. I guess I'll start with Route Two from the South River Bridge to 214 is listed in here for resurfacing in FY '23, which is great. I know a number of folks, y'all are great at filling the potholes and things like that there, but the road definitely, I'm excited it's going to get resurfaced. But my question being, it is a big logjam in District Seven generally on a day-to-day basis, and so I don't know if there's any way, if you all know approximate start dates now, or whether you'll be putting out some information. Usually, you're great about giving advance information, but I know I'm already getting questions from constituents about where, you know, what's going to happen. There's not a lot of ways to go around there. How are people going to be doing this? Is it going to be nighttime work, daytime work, and that sorts of stuff? So, to the extent you have any additional information that we can help push out on that, it would be super helpful.
Yeah, so I know our team, once we get closer to the actual date, will be definitely pushing out information. We typically do nighttime work on those type of efforts, but we'll obviously also work with the community, because sometimes nighttime work for those folks sleeping through there isn't always the most pleasant experience either. But I know Kim Tran and our District Five team will be happy to, as soon as we have information, share it with you, and then you can share it with your constituents as well.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to jump in here for just a moment and just start out with a big thank you. In case you don't ever recognize how much one little traffic signal can excite a neighborhood, I have thrilled neighbors at the intersection of Generals Highway and Knollwood Road. So, thank you for listening to their pleas and looking at that intersection and deciding to put a stoplight there, because you really have no idea how much daily hassle that can make and how much difference that makes. So, now, thank you, and I know that was a lot of folks involved, but I also want to move on to a question. And I heard a little bit about part-time shoulder use on 97. A good piece of 97 runs through my district, and so I'm curious to hear more about that. It sounds like that's a kind of out-in-the-future idea, but is that for buses? Is that for cars? Or tell me more about that, and what kind of things are you looking at?
So, there's several different things. One's, you know, we have an interesting wave movement there. If you're going in the evening, going north on 97, you got folks coming from a couple of different directions trying to merge. And I will say this, Maryland drivers think they're, sometimes their blinker is the yield sign and just move over. But I think there's opportunities there where we can add geometric improvements, meaning adding additional acceleration, lengthening the acceleration lane there on both the coming from 50 eastbound as well as 50 westbound to allow more queuing in those lanes, so folks aren't merging in such a small area. But the part-time shoulder use is basically, it wouldn't be used all the time, but just when demand is usually high in 97, it's northbound in the evenings. We're currently looking at some surveys right now to look at the cross slope and geometric, but right now we have an existing, enough footprint to have a part-time shoulder, and it wouldn't be just for buses, it would probably be just for passenger vehicles, actually, because what we would need to do is assess the shoulder and the structural integrity of the shoulder, because you don't necessarily want to be dumping a lot of heavy vehicles, slow-moving vehicles on an inadequate structure there. So, but what it would ultimately do is allow us to free up that bottleneck there, both with the geometric improvements, but also if we allow part-time shoulder during peak hours, it would allow traffic to use that shoulder in that existing footprint.
Thank you. Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was late this morning because I was one of those people, secretary reports, who had to take a kid to school. So, it's very impactful. But my question, the other question I wanted to ask is, I did receive a question from a constituent who is disabled and lives in an apartment, and I think in the Hanover area, and this person is interested in purchasing an EV and is doing their research, and they found that it can be very difficult, or especially challenging if you are needing to use a disabled parking spot to be able to reach an EV charger if there is one in the first place. And so, I've been struggling trying to find a way to provide some useful information to this person, because I think that the answer is that currently we don't have any policy addressing accessibility to chargers from disabled or handicapped spaces. And that if you, when you think about it, I drive an electric vehicle myself, so I know the challenges of just being an able-bodied person getting to a charger, and there are all kinds of other challenges you could have with compatibility of the charger in your car and all that stuff. But for a person who is disabled, I would think that it would become especially important to be able to charge your vehicle at home. You know, you may not be always at work, but if you're driving around this county, you go through your mileage, your battery really, really fast, going from Hanover to Annapolis and back, right? And charging at home is then what gives you the ability to have a reliable charged car to be able to take you wherever you want to go. So, I'm curious if you all have thought about this, and if not, how would you propose kind of going about it?
Sure. So, I believe, one, that we do have some in handicapped spaces within state facilities. And I believe, don't you have some at the Maryland House or the Chesapeake House, I believe are also in handicap?
I'm honestly not sure if they are handicap accessible or not, but we do have...
But I'll look. I'll look and double-check, but I think they are. The other side of that is, there's a lot of, as you know, a lot of people go to the private places, so if it's a Walmart, or I'm just using that as an example, that's private, you know, property, and so we wouldn't have that. So, in those cases, it would probably have to be more like state legislation to encourage that. I do know that, I know some people, I've seen them around where there are handicapped spots, but not in all these private facilities. I mean, that's probably more the key. But absolutely, if you have an EV, you would definitely want to have that charging station at your house. No question about it. It can charge up overnight, and it's not a problem in most cases. But it is, you know, it's an emerging technology, so it's not everywhere yet. We do have a robust plan from the state. As a matter of fact, we were very much complimented by the federal government, U.S. DOT, for not only getting our proposal in on time, but actually getting it in early. I believe we were first in the nation to get our plan in. So, we do have a robust plan, but I'm sure there's other things that folks have not thought about, like the one you just brought up, especially in the private, like I said, in the private sector areas. And I'm going to check on the parking rides. I have to see if we've done some there, but I'll follow up on that stuff.
And I would just add that as of October 1, there is a new law that went into effect that allows for people who are using those stations but not, or those parking spots but are not really electric vehicles to be cited. So, that is a new law as of October 1.
That is true, yeah.
I will say the legislature has discussed the issue quite a bit. I know in environment, transportation about apartment complexes and the challenges for individuals living there. I don't think anything's been passed yet, but it has been certainly a source of conversation and certainly understanding challenges there, but at this point, there's nothing that's been passed.
Growing pains.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So, you mentioned the contra-flow gates operating starting in the fall, which is incredibly exciting for residents of the Broadneck Peninsula. If you don't mind sharing for my colleagues the impacts of that, because it was an enormous effort on the state's part to get those things in the ground and ready to roll.
So, I'll let, Will will address it, but I'll, real quickly, to address a couple of things. As you know, with the old cone and barrel system, if you will, one, it's very dangerous for our employees, and it takes approximately, depending on the day, 20 minutes to a half an hour to set those up. When you set that up, you have to drag the traffic. When you drag the traffic, you end up with a mile on one side, backup, and a mile and a half on the other side. And so, just by doing that process, we create a backup, right? Or let's, we don't create the whole backup, it's just that we enhance that backup, right? And so, we were very adamant that we had to do something differently, so we decided to come up with the, what was being referred to as the gate system. And Will will correct me on that verbiage in a second, I guarantee it, but that's what everybody knows it as, so that's what I like to call it. And that will help us go into contra-flow and out-of-contra-flow much safer, much quicker and safer, not just safer for our employees, but safer for the traveling public. And so, you're right, it is an incredible process that we have to do, a lot of underground running of the electric. You can only imagine on a bridge, you got to do the electric on the bridge, but we're also got the overhead signs and the lane signs that'll enhance that to keep the traveling public safer, and that's what it's really about. But with that, oh, and I should say, we did that, we had the one side going westbound first, and I think as the eastbound was the emergency procurement that we put in, because we wanted to have it on both sides before we opened it up to traveling public, so that it would lessen the confusion with the crossover. Go ahead, Will.
Yeah, so Jim was exactly right. We do not want to refer to it as a gates project, because it is, what we call it, an automated lane closure system. And the reason for that is that the actual regulatory devices are going to be the overhead signs, the lane use controls that you'll see. The process will be, if you can imagine, you'll have a green arrow where you're allowed to go, and then suddenly it's going to shift to a yellow X. At that point, you should be vacating the lane, and then by the time it's a red X, you should be out of the lane. And the reason is, is much like if you approach a traffic signal, red doesn't mean, well, I can go up until I see a problem. Red means you're, get out of the lane, right? And same thing here. So, the way the system will work, as you go from that green to yellow to red, after that, we will be able to monitor the roadway to see that there's no vehicles in the lane, then we can deploy the gates at that point. It'll also be assisted with dynamic message signs. I mentioned in my remarks that those are full-color message signs, so there's a lot of opportunity to provide more creative messaging than you will really have ever seen anywhere else in the state. Many people like those message boards that tell you how many miles and the time to get to the bridge. That's very common throughout the state. This will tell you exactly the lane configuration and what to expect as you approach the bridge to help give that additional information to help avoid any incidents as you're getting there. So, that's going to go back two and a half miles on the western shore side and a mile and a half on the eastern shore. So, if there's an incident, you'll see additional information like never before to help you learn, like Tim joked about Maryland motorists, their turn signal being the yield. We want to let everybody know early to get into the correct lanes to avoid those last-second conflicts that can result in incidents that really exacerbate traffic. So, a lot of the project focus is as a safety improvement, but there will be some time savings, as Jim mentioned, in eliminating that manual effort that we do every day. So, I think I answered your question, but...
You did very well. Thank you. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Okay, Mayo Peninsula, Route 214. It is ranked number five on the Chapter 30 Project Scores in Appendix A, and it is in here, but the county is funding the design work, and in the project page here, it says, you know, "funding other." There's no money in the out-years in this CTP. So, my question is sort of, what role, if any, do you think the state will move forward playing from a financial standpoint, given that there's nothing shown here in the out-years right now?
We have it fully funded for design, thanks to the county's contribution, but what we need to is get to a point where we can get to a better understanding of what the ultimate scope's going to be.
Okay.
Once we know what the scope's going to be and get, you know, consensus with the community, because I think there's both mobility as well as emergency response, as well as pedestrian and safety improvements that are all kind of desired, once we kind of frame out what the ultimate goals and objectives are, we can better understand what the construction costs are, and knowing where it is in your rankings, that'll help us decide how to move forward with the construction.
Okay. That's what I was hoping you would say. I'll plug the public meeting is on October 20th, so for anybody who's listening, who's interested in that, thank you so much. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So, going to kind of get ahead of a meeting tomorrow, but I'll be very vague. I know you want to save all of the information for tomorrow's meeting, but the pilot for the ramp system, there were challenges, of course, but will you be ready tomorrow night to share all of the information that was garnered from that pilot?
I'm sure Kim Tran will be fully prepared and ready for that. No, just kidding. I'm picking on her a little bit. So, last week, we met with Bragg, and I kind of gave a broad overview of that. So, just the quick kind of USA Today highlights of that is, we did the pilot for two weekends. The first weekend, we felt like we had, it removed some of that friction merging onto US 50, and we actually had improved flow on US 50.
Yes.
The second weekend, we did not have as much improved flow, but we had challenges with weather, challenges with incidents, challenges with fire trucks and other things. So, we had a lot of other variables into our equation. What we would like to do is, and we know just looking at just one interchange along that corridor doesn't look at, we need to look at the entire system, and that's kind of some of the things that Kim will be sharing, and what I shared at Bragg last week, is we need to look at the entire system, and we'll be doing additional treatments and looking at tools that we can use next summer as well.
Yeah, I just want to say, as Tim mentioned, the second weekend, he called them incidences, there are crashes, right? And so, that really hurt our ability to look at this project and study it correctly. We did pick the two weekends so that we could gather the information and see how it worked, but as Tim mentioned, by reducing the conflict points, which, and everybody knows this, anytime you have conflict points where people are trying to merge, that lane gets backed up. And by reducing those conflict points, Route 50 moved quicker. And so, we were happily surprised, in some cases, how well it worked, and we look forward to doing more analysis on that at maybe even a few other ramps. So, as you know, and I think County Executive said it, that there's been questions about closing off the ramps. We did disclose a letter from FHWA, which is Federal Highway Administration, U.S. DOT, that said it would be absolutely illegal to do that for many reasons, as well as we could sustain losing some of our highway funds if we did it. And so, we had mentioned this before, there was a previous letter, but for some reason, nobody could find it. I think the county received that letter, by the way, the first time. No one could find it, so we asked the federal government again, and they gave us basically the same answer they gave us before, that we had heard about. So, we cannot close them, but we can manage them, and that's kind of the trick now.
Thank you for that. And just to plug tomorrow's meeting, 7:00, Cave Saint Clair Clubhouse, where we will hear all of the details, so I thank you.
There you go.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Allison Pickard, District Two. I also serve as the Maryland Association of Counties' representative on Legislative Committee. So, while I know we should be, maybe I should be more grateful for the increase in highway user revenue fees coming back to the county, we're still not back to pre-2008 recession. And we are investing heavily in our state roads as a county. So, first is more of a statement than a question. I really appreciate the opportunity to meet with Kim Tran and her staff and to talk about our shared responsibilities to our constituents. Y'all noted earlier in your presentation that constituents don't care if it's a state road or a county road. They just want it to be clean. They want it to be mowed for visibility with weeds, and we are, as you've heard with our DPW team and shared responsibility doing litter pickup and all those things. I've stopped short of taking my weed whacker out to some intersections that my constituents complain about. I do hope going forward, we can work through some of these shared challenges together, and I will continue to fight for a little more of those highway user revenue fees getting to the county. Municipality is one, big time, last year on the state legislature, but we're still not quite where we were, and yet we're still contributing to state roads when we have our own county roads to maintain with our tax dollars. So, I really do want to thank you for being here and appreciate all the collaboration, but I couldn't let it go. So I really do want to thank you for being here and appreciate all the collaboration, but I couldn't let it go without making that statement.
Sure.
Thanks.
Well, I, I, I think I can address that. So as you know, it was the previous administration that cut them by ninety percent, okay, during a recession. And Governor Hogan has been adamant every year to try and increase those revenues. Now, we did have a plan at the very beginning of the administration to increase them over an eight-year period. But the legislature did not pass those bills. And so it wasn't until, I think, year four, so the first election, uh, reelection for Governor Hogan, when he was able to get some of those HUR funds, Highway User Revenues, increased for the local governments. Now, the challenge there was, all the local governments were asking us to do more of their projects. Bump them up on the, on the list as far as getting them done. Well, we can't do both. We can't increase our funding for all the projects that you're requesting and increase HUR. There's just not enough money to do that. And that's why we, we began with an eight-year plan so that we could trickle in the HURs as we were also doing the major projects throughout the state. The fact that it was held up for three years made that much more difficult to increase the HURs. Because now you have a shorter time period. It's like paying your mortgage, shorter time period, the higher the cost. And so, um, again, Governor Hogan worked, uh, across the aisle for several years trying to get the HURs increased again. And of course, in an election year again, he was much more successful because the legislature and, and the governor came together to increase the HURs. So I think we've been very successful in this administration on increasing the HURs from a ninety percent decrease. But again, without the eight-year plan, it made it very difficult. And so yes, there is opportunity, uh, for growth in that area. But if we were to try and do it right now, as, uh, many have suggested, we would have to cut other programs that are already being funded or ones that people want funded. So you gotta pick which way you want to go on that. But I think that, uh, Governor Hogan's done an outstanding job with the plan and now getting it to where we are today.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I appreciate those comments. I think Ms. Pickard and I both, um, were at the General Assembly testifying. Um, and when I explain the process to constituents who are upset about county roadways, they have that aha moment. So, uh, I appreciate all the work of the Governor's Office. Um, this is probably my final question. Uh, when, when county, um, count- the county has a process when we're talking about development, where you have to look at infrastructure and there has to be, uh, study of roadways. I know when there is a proposed development and it's on a state road, there is the, the state review. Can you just share what the state is looking at when there's a proposed either commercial or residential or industrial? What is being reviewed?
So, so the, the county is in charge of development, obviously. And you heard from County Executive Pittman, you're now the, what, fourth largest, uh, populated county because of the explosion in development. So you do have a, a process, um, adequate facilities, adequate public facilities ordinance, process that you follow. And, and the state, because of development, some of those developments may have impact on the state roads. And so what we ask is for, um, a traffic analysis of that development and how much they're going to, I guess, increase traffic on the state roads as well as the county roads. And from that analysis that we do, we would determine if the developer has to mitigate some of the state highway areas. So for example, let's just say, uh, a lot of traffic ends up at a certain light and there's not enough queuing. We might ask them to extend the queuing or widen the, the intersection, just as an example. We may ask them to put in a light, as was mentioned, uh, earlier today, there may not be a light there. And we may have to get the developer to install the light because of the traffic demand that they're imposing on the state system. So that's really, we're kind of looking at the same thing you all do, uh, but just on the state system rather than county system.
And Secretary answered extremely well, just to add, uh, what, what we're looking, ultimately looking for is just for the, that particular development to mitigate their impact on the roadways, whether that's, um, county roadway or state roadway. And Secretary mentioned, but there's a traffic impact study where they, they have to estimate the number of trip, trip movements, where those movements are going to go. And then typically, uh, like I said, the, the county makes a decision on what permitting they're going to allow. And then if it's, if it's never touches a, a, a state road, then we're not necessarily involved. But if, it depends on the traffic movements and the expected volumes.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. That I think constituents in District Five will be happy to know that you have a thorough process as well.
Now, the one thing we can't do, I do want to make it clear, we can't cancel your project. In other words, we can't, can't. So a lot of people think that the state can say, oh no, you can't have this development because you're creating too much traffic. We cannot do that. All we can do is say to the developer, if you want to develop this property, this is the impact you're having on state roads. And therefore, this is what you have to mitigate. If they agree to mitigate, the project moves forward because, as you know, we have nothing to do with zoning or land use or anything like that in a county, and you don't want us to have that. And, uh, and, and you control all that as far as that goes. So I just wanted to make that clear, we cannot stop a project. It would be the developer that chooses not to spend the money to mitigate that would cancel the project.
Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any additional lights from my colleagues from the council, but if there's any additional questions, um, Mr. Corn. Hang on, let's, we'll figure out a way to get you to a microphone. That'd be great, yeah, come on down to the podium.
Thank you. Hi, I'm John Corn, President of Bicycle Advocates for Annapolis and Anarundel County. I also chair the County Bike Commission, which will meet fifteen minutes from now, just right down the hall, if any of you want to join us. Uh, three thank yous and three asks. Uh, first, I participated quite a bit personally in the development of the Move Anarundel Strategic Transportation Plan and the Walk and Roll Plan that you heard about earlier. They are very, very aligned with the state transportation plan and the state Bike-Ped Plan. So the collaboration there at the strategic level has been excellent. And so I thank you and I thank a lot of the folks that are in the room here. Second is we have great engagement with staff. I know a lot of them personally, um, SHA at the M.D.O.F. Kate's, uh, folks that have followed in Kate's footsteps in Bike-Ped. So engagement at the staff level is, is really great. And we're very pleased with a lot of the projects, many of which have been mentioned. One seventy-five side path in a, in a, yeah, the most, uh, highly developed, right next to the biggest employer in the state. The continuation at the two ninety-five interchange, uh, the study at the Naval Academy Bridge near here. The study to get a shared use path from Anarundel Mills, uh, back to the airport so we could fill a critical gap in the trail network you saw. So, uh, great work going on there at the project level. So those are my three thank yous. Now for the three asks. First, um, grant and project execution. And I'm not laying all this on, uh, on the state. This is for county, state and citizens. It takes too long to go from plan to study to design to actually getting something built. And it, uh, some of it, I know there's federal, when it's federal money, there's compliance, I, I get all that. We can do better. And I know SHA under took a study of streamlining. We can do better. And if we do better, we'll, we'll serve our, our citizens quicker and we'll be better positioned to get more money from the feds as we move projects through the pipeline. So together, we have got to do a better job of compressing that life cycle. And I am, I am pestering, uh, e- everyone I know involved in the project, Tim, Tim knows, um, to try to do that. Uh, second crossings has, has, has been mentioned. Biggest challenge for cyclists and people on foot is crossings. Crossings, not just of difficult roadways like Route Three, where so many people live on the east side and want to get to the shopping on the west side. And they have to get in their car to travel half a mile. It's crazy, it puts traffic on the road, but also crossings of water. So everything we can do to make safer crossings, roads and water, absolutely vital. I'd be remiss as a bike advocate if I didn't mention the unfulfilled promise of a Bike-Ped facility on the Nice Bridge. And I know that there's discussions in Baltimore later today about that. But, um, the Chesapeake Bay Bridge must have, by policy, a separated Bike-Ped facility when it's built. No different from the Cuomo Bridge, no different from the Pensacola Bridge, which, uh, which is a low-density area, three-mile bridge. All the new bridges in, across the country are getting them. We absolutely have to have that by policy when the Chesapeake Bay Bridge, if and when there's either a replacement or a new span. And I'll add to that, Susquehanna River is a really difficult, it, it's almost impossible. And other facility on the Hayden Bridge, but that's, that's really tough. Um, if Amtrak builds a new bridge, maybe we can do something with the old, old rail bridge there. So, uh, crossings, both river, uh, and, and water. And then finally, on Chesapeake Bay, I, uh, stu- Tier Two study, I'd love to see the scope go, go out to ninety-seven. The whole idea has, has been mentioned, keep the through traffic off of the local roads. The, the solution to two and three traffic is to keep the through traffic off of there. So if that study scope could extend out to ninety-seven rather than stopping at the Severn River Bridge, you're doing a TSMO on ninety-seven. You got the, the study from Severn River Bridge to Kent Island. Get the study all the way to ninety-seven so that it's really looking at the whole system to keep cars on the controlled access roads that are traveling through so that Google and Waze doesn't take them to, uh, to all the local roads. So thank you. Those are my three, uh, thank yous and my three asks.
So I think I can address some of those. The last one you mentioned, I don't think that we could do that at this point because we're in a Tier Two, uh, study on the Bay Bridge. And you mentioned at the very beginning of your asks that we streamline the NEPA process. That would absolutely extend the NEPA process, okay? The NEPA process is a NEPA process, it's a federal process, we have no control over that. Not just the state of Maryland, but I sit on the ASTO Board, uh, you know, for, for highways. And every state is frustrated with how long it takes the feds to go, or us to go through the federal process for NEPA. It is an environmental process, uh, so, you know, there is some reason for the length of this because we want to make sure we get it right. But I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more and neither could, uh, uh, so do a lot of my colleagues at the state level. The CEOs of other, uh, of, of other states totally agree it could be streamlined. So we're in agreement there, by the way. I appreciate the fact that you first also mentioned, and you, I think your three, uh, compliments of how well the state works together with the local governments. And that is going to bring me to the Nice Bridge in a minute. But, um, so we do work very well together, especially where it makes sense. And one of the things that, that we kind of require is for the local governments to have a, a bike plan before we would connect to the local government's, uh, plan. If they do not have one, which was the case near the Nice, Nice Bridge, then it's much more difficult because the roads leading up to and going from the Nice Bridge had no accessibility and no bike plan whatsoever. So the challenge that you mentioned on the Nice Bridge would also occur on the highways coming to and from, uh, that bridge. I will say this, we are, um, we are adamant about working with the local governments where it makes sense. So I was Deputy Secretary in the Ehrlich Administration, the Woodrow Wilson Bridge, you know, was our project. We did it at the Woodrow Wilson Bridge because it has hundreds of thousands of people a year utilizing that bridge for pedestrian.
Yep.
And bike crossing, okay? And I think it's around four hundred thousand, but I'd have to look that up. I don't want you to hold me to that number, by the way. You may know the number, by the way, I don't know.
It's big.
It's big, it's big. So think about that. So about four hundred thousand pedestrians and bicycles use that bridge. There are about seventeen thousand vehicles that use the Nice Bridge. The population density doesn't warrant it, okay? Now, you, everybody says that Governor Hogan promised a, a bike path on that bridge. When it was originally thought of with the RFP, that was what the case was. When the RFP went through, it did have the opportunity to put a bike path in and opportunity not to have a bike path. Now, the reason it was done that way was to see how much the bike path would cost. We have a finite amount of money to work through all the projects throughout the state, whether it be highway, transit, airports, port, you name it. We have a finite amount of money. When the board for MDTA saw that it would cost sixty-four, sixty-four million dollars for a one-point-nine-mile bike path. And we had a sixty million dollar, fifty-nine million, I think it was, we'll call it sixty, sixty-million-dollar project that we needed to do on ninety-five to save lives because we have hundreds of thousands of people using ninety-five each and every day versus seventeen thousand. The board, not Governor Hogan, by the way, because Governor Hogan doesn't control that board other than the appointments. The board gets to make their fiduciary duty to determine how they spend that money. I think, and I've asked, when we asked the public whether they think we should spend sixty-four million dollars on a bike path on a bridge that has no connection on either side or spend sixty million dollars enhancing I ninety-five, which widens the road and saves lives. Everyone says that's a better use of that money. And that's why the board did what they did. So again, where bike paths make sense, where the counties have, have, um, plans, we put them in. Where they don't, we make different decisions. As a matter of fact, the ICC is another perfect example. Montgomery County said that they would complete the bike path. They've never to this day completed the bike path. So you have local governments making the same decision because of cost. Bike paths can't be everywhere. We try to put them in places like you mentioned.
Yep.
Where they make sense and where we can accommodate them financially.
So for the Chesapeake, of course, we have the Broadneck Trail is almost complete, right? The Sandy Point Park and the Cross Island Trail on the other side, so.
It makes sense there. It makes sense, absolutely makes sense for the Bay Bridge, and I'll say that today. However, I'll probably get in trouble with my federal, um, people because I'm not supposed to predetermine anything. Um, so I can't, I can't say we're going to do it because they won't let me say, uh, we're going to do it because the NEPA process has to be without anybody trying to decide it before we actually study it.
Fair enough.
So, you know, I kind of, I'm kind of held handcuffed a little bit on that.
If I could just add, Jim, we are, we have committed that as part of the Tier Two study, we will make it a multimodal analysis.
Oh, absolutely.
And that the different build alternatives would li- look at different modes, including bikes. So that, that will be part of Tier Two as all of the build alternatives are looked at. And then on your point about extending the limits of the Tier Two, when we were in Talbot County, they asked us to extend it to four-four. Worcester County, they asked us to extend it to Ocean City. Like, we have to have a manageable study that actually can be functionally completed. And the limits were picked based on where you actually pick up highway lanes. If you think about on the eastern shore, you have four lanes coming in from three oh one and four coming in at fifty. So that's a combination of eight lanes total at that juncture, whereas on the bridge today, we have five lanes. So we went to manageable points that tie into locations where the highway is already.
Fair enough. The hope of then, between the TSMO study, the NEPA study and just doing the analysis, hopefully it gets done even, even if it's not an official part of the NEPA study, I get that.
But I will say this, it's a four-point-five mile or four-point-three mile bridge?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, four-point-two miles.
Four-point-two, four-point-two mile bridge and we're studying twenty-two miles of corridors. So, so we're going way above and beyond.
I didn't ask all the way to the Beltway, at least.
No, 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 I know, I know, I know, you've been very fair. But, but I will also say, on the Nice Bridge, uh, early in the conversations. But, but I will also say, on the Nice Bridge, early in the conversations, we did offer it to Charles County and we did offer it to King George County.
What about DNR? It's beyond Charles County.
Well, no, 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 but I'm just saying.
And I did not mean to, I did not mean to monopolize this much time.
MDTA, no, I like to explain it. We, we like to explain, when, when we hear a, a concern, we like to explain why. And so, thank you for the opportunity, but MDTA cannot own a facility according to their trust agreement that isn't a toll facility, okay? We're not going to maintain something, it's a fiduciary right that they have to, to do that because they only get their funding from tolls. They don't get any state funding, they don't get any TTF or Transportation Trust Fund funding. So it is, it, it runs like a business, if you will. And we offered it up to Charles County and King George County. Both of them looked at it because they thought it'd be good for economic development and both of them turned it down because they recognized that the expense of continuing the maintenance on that bridge would more than overwhelm any, any economic development or enhancement. There's also a lot of enhancements that will have to occur on that bridge to even make it pedestrian-friendly or bicycle-friendly, which is very expensive. I think it's $50 million over a 30 or 40-year period. And, and so everyone has looked at this and determined that is not the way to go. And so for those reasons, we would continue with the demolition, I guess maybe after today, I don't know.
We'll find out.
We'll see what happens today.
Yes, we will.
And on, on the DNR point, if you look at the Bill Burton Fish Pier in Cambridge, it's a, it's a prime example of a location that had the intent of putting it out there for recreational purposes. And yet unless there's real money to maintain it.
Forty million.
Exactly what happened there will happen at the Nice Bridge. That, that fishing pier is closed today due to inadequate maintenance and care for it.
Yeah, because it's unsafe for pedestrians or bicycles.
Correct.
It's actually unsafe for pedestrians.
So these existing facilities, when we talk about the cost to put in scour counter measures for the new bridge, the cost to repurpose the existing bridge where the barriers are not tall enough for pedestrians, there's finger joints on the bridge that are not at, they're not compatible with bicycle use. The list goes on and on of all the reasons why it would be very, very costly. The maintenance money portion of it is real and again, Bill Burton Bridge, the fishing pier is a perfect example of what happens when you don't put the money into it.
Thank you. I just want to provide one last opportunity for anyone in the audience that had a question that they'd like to ask while we have this panel assembled. All right, seeing no additional lights, no hands in the audience, I will just once again say thank you very much to our panel from the state. Thank you very much, Secretary Ports and all your colleagues. Thank you to the folks from Anarundel County that came today and have a wonderful afternoon. And did you want to make one closing remark?
I just wanted to confirm that the Councilwoman, Lacey's comment, we did, I did confirm that Maryland House and Chesapeake House, they have four universal charging stations plus one charging station at each that is handicap accessible.
Have a wonderful rest of your day, everyone, and drive and walk and bike safely.